We might as well get started. Welcome, everyone, to this month's TeachingAmericanHistory.org webinar, which is sponsored by the Ashbrook Center at Ashland University. TAH.org is the leading online resource for documents-based study of American history, government, and civics for teachers, students, and citizens. I'm Chris Burkett, Associate Professor of Political Science here at Ashland University, also co-chair of our Master of Arts in American History and Government program. This year's theme of the webinar series is Landmark Supreme Courses, sorry, Landmark Supreme Court Cases. And if you haven't joined us before, the point is to have a thoughtful conversation between two or three scholars, three scholars, and to talk about important, in this webinar series, important court cases. And we encourage all of you joining us to participate in that conversation by submitting questions in the chat box. And as always, I will try my best to get to those as much as possible and pass those on to our panelists today, or if Jason and Emily, if you happen to notice them in the chat box and want to address a question, feel free to do so. So we are, as always, drawing or basing our conversation on documents that are drawn from our very extensive document collection that is available at TAH.org. Today, we're talking about Brown v. Board of Education, decided in 1954, with a special mention of Plessy v. Ferguson. So hopefully be able to, at some point in our conversation, talk about the relationship of those two cases. And I'm very happy to have with us today Emily Hess and Jason Stevens, both of whom, I'm proud to say, are my colleagues here at Ashland University. So thanks to both of you for joining us, especially on such a cold morning. Glad you could be here. So Emily, I think you've done this before. Jason, this may be your first webinar, Saturday webinar. As always, just feel free to talk about whatever you think is relevant. And as I said, we'll get some good questions, I'm sure, from the participants who are joining us today. But I thought we'd start with, just maybe Emily, if you don't mind, could you start by giving us a little bit of background, some historical context for the 1954 Brown v. Board decision?
Sure.
And I ask that because, the reason we picked these 10 Supreme Court cases that we're looking at this year, we picked them because they are the most commonly taught Supreme Court cases in high school. So maybe as a way to help teachers think about how to approach this, maybe you could give us some historical context for the case.
Absolutely. So in 1954, you have the first major appeal to the idea of segregated education on the elementary K through 12 school level. Previous to this time, I mean, it's, let me back up, it's still pretty darn recent that you even have an idea of public education as necessity, right, as required by law. So once you have that established, the question then is, what should this education look like? And how should it be distributed? How should it be approached by all citizens, local, state level? Now, the NAACP, which was organized in the early 20th century, establishes the LDEF Fund, the Legal Defense Education Fund, solely for the purpose of attempting to integrate schools and to challenge the segregated school system at the time. Now, of course, if you are going to challenge Plessy versus Ferguson, that's applied to schooling, you're going to do so on the graduate level or on the professional level, right, of schooling. Because obviously, there is no equal to that, right? There is no separate, there is no black law school, there is no black medical school, or there are very few of those. And so you, one of the most important things to remember about the Civil Rights Movement is that these cases don't just happen out of thin air, right? Rosa Parks did not just sit down one day, and Brown v. Board did not just appear, but instead, there were decades' worth of grassroots organization and activism and building cases to eventually get to the public education system of K through 12. And so you start to see the NAACP picking away in the '30s and the '40s, until finally, by 1954, they believed that they've gained enough momentum in the integration of education that they're willing to take on cases like that of Linda Brown. And Linda Brown, an African-American girl, her father had decided that he would challenge the local school system in Topeka, Kansas, because his daughter had to travel an excessive number of miles to a black school where she would actually literally walk by the white school on the way there. Now, hers was, she was the named plaintiff in the case, but there were many cases besides hers that were joined together underneath this name. But the reason why she was the named plaintiff, besides the fact that, I assume she was the perfect poster child for integration, as far as this very adorable and innocent image of a young girl, is that she was in Kansas. And Kansas is not necessarily smack of Southern society and orthodoxy, right? Instead, it feels more of a Western state. And so the NAACP was attempting to show that this is a national problem, right? This is not something that's just from the backward South, but instead, is a national issue that we all must address. So that's a little bit about the historical context of Brown v. Board.
And so did the NAACP approach Mr. Brown, or, you know, was this, did he initiate the lawsuit and then the NAACP?
Yes, he initiated the lawsuit, along with other, Clarendon County in South Carolina had issues with busing and funding and supplies and all of those things. And so you see, all of these cases start to develop around the country, and the NAACP is aware of all of these, right? But oftentimes, that's a great question, Chris, because oftentimes, the NAACP will approach, right, or activist groups like Plessy v. Ferguson, right, will approach the individual to say, hey, would you really be willing to put yourself on the line for the sake of advancement and progress? Yeah.
Yeah, that's really interesting, especially about the timing of the thing. That is, as you were saying, that there was a kind of judgment involved about when the timing was right to really pull these cases together. I don't want to overstate that, because I may be misunderstanding what you're, misinterpreting what you're saying. But in terms of the development of education, it seemed that things were coming together. There was a, correct me if I'm wrong, Emily, there was a more concerted civil rights movement effort underway? Was it that sort of a network of resources had been strengthened? And then, or no, am I misunderstanding this?
Yeah, no, no, I think, I think there are a number of things going on. I do think that there is this particular momentum in the NAACP for the Legal Defense Education Fund, that once you have attacked the beast of graduate schools and professional schools, right, you're slowly starting to build your case that, okay, what exactly is it about this education that is making it unequal, right? Is it solely the separation of said thing? Because we know in Brown v. Board, they don't simply talk about unequal facilities, right, but that there's something more to this. So I do think it would be impossible to have Brown v. Board without having previous decisions of Swept V Painter, for example. With that being said, I also think it's very hard to have a case like this, as mentioned in Brown v. Board, if you don't have a requirement of public education, right? This isn't going to come about in 1910 or 1915, because no one was actually required, right, to go to school through high school until this really important time period in American history. And so I think, obviously, the necessity of the education, the momentum of the NAACP, and the general organization of African-Americans after World War II, I think, should not be dismissed either, that this is, Brown v. Board is considered to be the beginning of the Civil Rights Movement, right, officially. I mean, there's always that grassroots organization, but this is when, you know, the official history textbooks say, because this is when you start to see any significant progress happen, right? There's been organizing for years, but what's actually on the books? And then the following year, you have the murder of Emmett Till, you have the Montgomery Bus Boycott. And so this, I think this ignites possibility and hope amongst African-Americans that change can occur.
Yeah, that's very interesting. I bet by, on that last point, I remember reading a great quote from Ralph Ellison, who praised the decision in Brown as finally giving hope to, you know, all of these children, right? Ralph Ellison thought this was a very, very positive step. So, but you mentioned, and by the way, Jason, feel free to jump in at any time, but Emily, you mentioned Brown is considered to be, by textbooks anyway, sort of the official beginning of what's come to be known as Civil Rights Movement. I have two, one's just kind of a curiosity, what was Dr. King doing at this time?
Well, Dr. King, I believe, was finishing his PhD up in Boston, because he is actually, when we see him for the first time, right, the first time that he really matters in the Civil Rights narrative, he comes down to Montgomery because he's going to start preaching, right? And so they hear about this guy that's in town, and they know he's pretty intelligent, and, you know, he's decent-looking and charismatic, and they think, hey, can you give a speech? You know, we're going to start this boycott on Monday, sure. And so in about 45 minutes, right, he whips up the speech. So he's, he's not the King that we would, that we'll know in '63 by any means, but, yeah.
And my other question was, Emily, you mentioned, you pointed out that this case takes place in 1954, so it's about 10 years after World War II, which I think is significant in some ways, right? Because a significant number of African-Americans served in World War II, fairly significant, probably, I think more than in any previous war, if I'm not mistaken, although I may be wrong about that. But what is the, what is the condition, what is the state of, of, what are relations like between whites and African-Americans after World War II up to 1954? And what is, what is the, I'm not framing the question very well, is there, is there a consequence to, is there some consequence or aftermath, if you will, from World War II that gives some impetus to a growing sense of urgency with regard to civil rights?
Right.
Have you thought about, yeah?
No, that's.
Thought this or thought about it?
Yeah, that's a great question. So Frederick Douglass, and you know, I'm going to try and throw Frederick Douglass in here at some point, so I.
I knew he was going to come up.
I played my card, Frederick Douglass, you know, when he called for African-Americans to fight during the Civil War, he says, you're not animals, you're men. And what distinguishes those two is that men can reason, right? And you know what's going to happen if the Confederacy wins. We're not sure what's going to happen if the Union wins. Lincoln's a great guy, I have all the faith in the world in him, I'm paraphrasing, right, obviously. But many African-American leaders, even those that became more radical in their ideology, for example, W. B. Du Bois, even during World War I, he will say, there are very few opportunities where African-Americans can prove their love for country and patriotism and prove that they are citizens and should have the rights of all other citizens. And so let us put our protests aside, and let us prove and demonstrate our equality as men and our love for country as citizens. And so I think, especially with World War II, when you have the Double V Campaign, right? Victory against fascism abroad and victory against racism at home, you have this, I think, certain amount of vigor and excitement and, you know, chest out American pride in this hope that if we're willing to sacrifice so much to fight this great evil abroad, then most certainly, if there's any time that the oppression at home will stop, it will be after World War II. And it's well-known and documented that Nazi Germany, you know, certainly used our segregation and racism against us and sending out the propaganda messages to black soldiers, right, as they're marching through Europe. And yet, that did not stop them, right? That there's something about the United States, even though there is a problem, right? We say one thing and we do another, at least we said it, right? And there's hope that we can somehow get to that creed that we had once established, as Ralph Ellison says, that black people keep the United States from moral slavism, right?
Yeah.
That this group calls them out. And so upon returning, the group that received the most violent attacks were black men dressed in United States uniforms attempting to register to vote. There were lynchings of black soldiers in uniform attempting for voter registration. And Truman actually organized an investigative study to see what was the cause of all of this violence throughout the South. And really, I think Truman was one of the first to shift the national agenda towards focusing on this issue, once realizing what the common denominator was. And so, you know, I think it's this, a whole lot of things, a lot of discontent and frustration after serving country and coming home, that especially in Mississippi, you start to see the organization on the ground floor of, of really calling out the United States, right? As Ralph Ellison says, you say one thing, you need to do another, so.
Yeah, that's really good, that's really good. I like how you connected World War II to the Civil War there, Emily, because that reminded me that in 1896, when Plessy v. Ferguson is decided, Justice Harlan, right, the dissenter in that case, the dissenter in the case, right, that, you know, separate but equal case, this lone voice crying out in the wilderness, Justice Harlan, one of his arguments against the decision of the court is the fact that these segregated railway cars are destructive of the rights of black Civil War soldiers, many of whom, he says, right, in his dissenting opinion, many of whom perhaps risked their lives for the preservation of the Union, right? We are violating the rights that we all fought for in the Civil War, and we're especially violating the rights of, right, our hero African-American soldiers. And Harlan points this out in the case. And it seems that, right, that philosophy of Frederick Douglass that you so well articulated does not come to be accepted by the court until Brown, although Harlan was there making the same point in 1896.
That's a great point. Maybe, can we do this, since you brought up the Plessy case, Jason?
Yeah.
Why don't we, because I may be wrong about this, you guys correct me if I'm wrong about this, but I think it helps to understand the significance of the Brown decision. I think it really does help to consider the legacy that's established by the Plessy case. And so maybe we can talk about the significance of the Plessy case and the reasoning that went into it, maybe the legal arguments that were made with regard to the 13th and 14th Amendments, and then talk about the consequences of that decision and how that may or may not have affected Brown v. Board in '54. So Jason, you mentioned that, you know, building on Emily's point about the hope of Frederick Douglass and others, that in the aftermath of the Civil War, having proven their capabilities, their potential to be good citizens, right, that it would open a new era of understanding and equal treatment. And we know that didn't happen, right? Would you say, would you say that Plessy v. Ferguson is a rejection of where, well, how do I say this? Is Plessy v. Ferguson and its ruling on separate but equal a confirmation of the direction the country was taking with regard to racial equality after the Civil War? Or did the decision in Plessy come as a kind of surprise and seem contradictory to the direction the country was taking? Or that a lot of people, like Frederick Douglass perhaps, and Booker T. Washington, thought the country was taking?
Yeah, the famous, or I should say infamous, decision rendered in Plessy v. Ferguson, I would say is most certainly a setback after, right, in the decades following the Civil War, because, right, on the heels of the passage of the 13th, 14th, and 15th Amendments, right after the, right after the Civil War, abolishing slavery, equal protection of the laws, due process of law, and voting rights, regardless of color or previous condition of servitude, Plessy v. Ferguson by 1896, certainly, if it doesn't turn back the progress that had been made in regards to the rights of African-Americans, certainly at least puts a stop on it, puts a hold on it. Because you have Justice Brown, ironically enough, Justice Brown is the one who delivers the opinion in the Plessy case, rendering the infamous decision of separate but equal, that as long as the facilities provided for the races are equal, then separation doesn't matter, it is not a violation of the Equal Protection Clause of the 14th Amendment. And what Brown asserts in the Plessy case is that, and again, maybe a little, maybe I should back up here just a bit, because here, we're not talking about education, we're talking about railroad facilities, railway facilities, where separate cars were required under Louisiana law for white passengers and African-American passengers, which, by the way, was, the railway companies were against this law as well, because it increased their cost to have to provide these separate facilities for the different, for the different races. But Brown rules in the, in the case that Homer Plessy, that his, his argument, based on the assumption that the enforced separation of the two races stamps the, the American black race with a badge of inferiority and violates the 13th and the 14th Amendments' Equal Protection Clause, he says that Homer Plessy asserts that he is stamped with this badge of inferiority, that he has a sensory feeling of inferiority because of these separate facilities. And Brown rules that his feelings were contrary to the facts, that there's no reason to be found in the act itself, or the way that it is applied or enforced, that Homer Plessy or anyone else belonging to the African-American race would be justified in, right, their overwhelming sense of inferiority.
Now, so if they, if they feel inferior, they're imagining it, is that, was that a point?
As long as the facilities are equal, as long as the facilities are the same, right, their, right, their sense of being stamped with a badge of inferiority doesn't measure up to the facts. And, right, that will, that will change when we get to 1954 in the Brown case, because interestingly enough, and I've always found this, you know, intriguing in regards to the Brown case, interestingly enough, Chief Justice Warren, in his decision in Brown, he, he doesn't go back to Harlan's dissent. Harlan's dissent founded upon the notion that our Constitution is colorblind, our Constitution is colorblind in regard to race. That's not the argument, surprisingly enough, that Chief Justice Warren makes in the Brown case. He goes back to this badge of inferiority, or this sense or feeling of inferiority. And Brown says that because of the advancements that have been made in the social sciences, in psychological studies, in psychological research, that we now know, which wasn't known back when Plessy was decided, we now know that these feelings of inferiority are actually genuine and can be backed up by scientific evidence. And therefore, the feelings of inferiority then trump the facts of equal facilities. And this goes back to Emily's point, that in Brown, right, it no longer matters whether the facilities are equal, right? That doesn't even, you know, sort of come into, it doesn't even form part of the judgment rendered by the court. It doesn't matter if they're equal or not. Separation is in its very nature unequal.
Okay, that's interesting. So.
Can I?
Emily, go ahead, yeah.
Okay. I actually completely disagree with Jason.
Ah!
So I, you know, I would agree that there was some advancement being made. You said that the Plessy versus Ferguson was, was a step back, and I agree, it was certainly a step back, to say otherwise would be foolish, I think. But I do think it was indicative of the time. I thought we were, that we're moving in this progression towards, or progression back. We have the 13th, 14th, and 15th Amendment passed, but by 1877, it's black ink on white paper, right? That as, the greatest problem with Reconstruction is the fact that just because the South lost, does not mean they're reformed, right? Like, the spirit of what started the Civil War is still alive and well after the Civil War, of the idea of where the black man should be in society, right? And Alexander Stephens says, it's the, you know, the cornerstone of our Confederacy is going to be the inferiority of the black man. And by the end of the Civil War, it sounds though, oh, well, we lost, I guess you guys were right. You know, that's, that's what Lincoln had hoped, right, that that would really prove. But I think it takes some time, as King will say, it takes legislation and education, right? And legislation, the obvious, black ink on white paper, but the education of the souls of people really interacting and not just having to desegregation, but an integration of hearts. And so, though you have, I would agree with Dr. Stevens in the sense that you certainly see this, this amazing progression that you would never see in the time of Dred Scott, right? That you're acknowledging the citizenship, excuse me, of African-Americans, providing for a black male suffrage or universal male suffrage. But ultimately, if the spirit of the South does not agree with said thing, and federal troops are not there to enforce it, and we can talk about that in another webinar, whether federal troops should be enforcing, right, legislation that will create some sort of social equality, you know, you do have this time of redemption during Plessy v. Ferguson, and redemption meaning this idea that something went horribly wrong that we need to redeem. And so you have the grandfather clause and all of these, you know, poll taxes and, you know, this extraordinary political terrorism and a number of Northerners that are just plain tired, right? And aren't that interested, they're focused more on the Carnegie's and the Rockefellers of the North than the Ku Klux Klan of the South. And with this newly invigorated Second Industrial Revolution in modern America, I think the two sides that, the two camps are either the dogmatic, extreme Southern side, or the laissez-faire, kune matada, apathetic North, right? And so, you know, the idea that Plessy v. Ferguson is passed right now, I don't think is a shocker to many people. I think, I think, you know, the North may be like, whoa, that's, I mean, I guess, you know, whatever you need to do, because they don't have that same experience until the Great Migration of having an influx of African-Americans in society and knowing what to do with them. Although Frederick Douglass would say, don't do anything to us, you've done enough, like, thanks, you can just stay away. So I, I don't know, I think, I think Plessy v. Ferguson is spot-on for capturing the political and social milieu, at least of the South in the 1890s. But that, I'm going back a few points, just so I can argue with Stevens, which is what I look forward to on a regular basis. So my apologies for my self-indulgence here on this Saturday morning.
No, not at all.
I had a donut and I picked a fight, like, it's a great day, it's a really good.
No, I wouldn't necessarily disagree with that either, that Plessy v. Ferguson is sort of indicative of the mindset of post-Civil War Reconstruction South. Yeah, that sounds right to me.
Okay. Yeah, maybe you were focusing on the, that politically, it's going backwards, right, as far as legislation, Supreme Court, but I'm like, that's the way of the South, so two separate things. But I still like to say I disagree with, I'm just going to say I disagree with you, whether we do or not.
Yeah, so it was a rollback, it was, there was a reflection of the Southern mind still, and the apathy of the Northern mind in a certain way, the apathy, the exhaustion, as you put, I think you put it that very nicely, Emily. And so there was a, there was a concerted rollback effort.
Yeah.
They couldn't roll it back all the way to having slavery, but they could roll it back, just short of that, or as far as they could, right?
In another name.
Yeah, very good. So why, so, can you, there are a number of good questions I want to turn to here from our participants in just a second, but can you say something, either of you, about the effect that the Plessy case had on, on civil rights leaders themselves in the, in the 1890s into the early 1900s? Do we know the effect that it had? Did it encourage, embolden, discourage?
Jason, do you?
Yeah, why don't you take that one?
Okay. I, I mean, the issue ultimately is that the constitutionality of the laws that enforce segregation is settled, right? That segregation is okay. And so I think, in a sense, what it does is it makes the camps of activists more extreme, right? That there's no middle ground, really. It's either the Washingtonians, who are going to work with their heads in the lion's mouth. who are going to work with their heads in the lion's mouth, right, and overcome them with yeses, right? And at least have it appear that they're falling in line and saying, this is fine. We don't need social equality. We can, you know, work through industrial education while at the same time in the back room, right, paying for other activist organizations to push the desegregation of schools, right? So you've got that one side, we're falling in line and and subversively, right, trying to work the system. And then you have people like Du Bois, at least these are the most immediate ones right at this time, that are saying, are you kidding me? The, the last thing that we're going to do is be gradual right now. And so this will infuriate some and make, make some like Du Bois feel, we must be vocal. We must organize. And you have these official organizations established, like the NAACP, at the turn of the century. And a significant minority of blacks coming to the North with the Great Migration, which makes that possible. And then, you know, you have Washington who says, let's, let's try and work within this to our benefit. So.
That's great. That's very clear. Thank you very much. So Jason, I, I'm going to throw the next question at you. I'm gonna, I got a question from Larry having to do with Plessy. In the Plessy case, why did the plaintiffs even consider challenging based on the Thirteenth Amendment? It seemed like the Fourteenth Amendment would have been the stronger argument. Why did they challenge on the Thirteenth Amendment? And then I'm going to add my own question. I went to this. On the flip side, in Harland's dissent, do you think Harland made an argument that was consistent with the ideas and principles of the Declaration of Independence?
Okay, yeah, two very good, two very good questions. Why, why the plaintiffs in the Plessy case go to, at least in, in large measure, to the Thirteenth Amendment? In their case, Justice Harland, in his, in his dissent, he explains that when he says, this is, this is early on, and it might be helpful to, to quote the text here a bit, this is early on in the opinion selections that we have. This is in the, the fourth paragraph where he brings up the, the argument from the, the Thirteenth Amendment. He says, "The Thirteenth Amendment does not permit the withholding or the deprivation of any right necessarily inhering in freedom. It not only struck down the institution of slavery as previously existing in the United States, but it present, but it prevents the imposition of any burdens or disabilities that constitute badges of slavery or servitude." It decreed universal civil freedom in this country. So what Harland is saying here is, yeah, the Thirteenth Amendment applies because the Thirteenth Amendment, it's about much more than just abolishing slavery. It's about abolishing badges of slavery or servitude. And that's exactly what this doctrine of separate but equal and the, the segregation of railway cars actually does. So it does violate the, the Thirteenth Amendment, which had not only just outlawed the, the institution of slavery in practice, right, as previously protected by Southern law, but also all badges of slavery or all badges of servitude, which this law, Harland says, upholds or tries to, tries to impose upon members of the African American race. And whether or not Justice Harland's decision comports with the principles of the, the Declaration, I would say absolutely, absolutely. It's, you look at the majority opinion in Plessy, you look at what Brown has to say. Separate but equal. Separate but equal. He is, you know, clarifying or attempting to, to clarify the equality principle of the, the Declaration of Independence. He's trying to, to add to it, almost like it's reminiscent of, almost like the, the arguments of the, the northern Democrats like Stephen Douglas or Roger Taney during the pre-Civil War period, who say that, yeah, all men are created equal, but the founders did not mean to include these other different races. Or the Know-nothings who say, right, all men are created equal except, right, the Irish and the Catholic and immigrants. Trying to, to change the language of the, the Declaration. I think that's what Harland sees the court attempting to do in this case. And so, as I mentioned before, right, he puts forward the, the, the principle that I think that we get from the Declaration of Independence, that the law ought to be colorblind. And that the law neither knows nor tolerates classes among citizens. In respect of civil rights, I'm just quoting here directly from, from Harland, "All citizens are equal before the law. The humblest is the peer of the most powerful. The law regards man as man and takes no account of his surroundings or his color when his civil rights is guaranteed by the supreme law of the land are involved." That's the, that's the Declaration. Man as man. And that the law tolerates no distinction among the classes.
Yeah, that's great. By the way, I know you-
To any criterion whatsoever.
Yeah. And I know, Jason, I know you teach, you're, you're teaching a course on Lincoln, I think, right now, right? You teach Lincoln.
That's right.
Have written on Lincoln. Do we see a, a similar, I see a similar argument or understanding of equality here in that, especially that line, "The law regards man as man." I can't, I can't help but think of Abraham Lincoln's argument in the debates with Stephen Douglas, where he said, "In some respects, in some respects, the Negro is not the white man's equal, but in, in the right of, of, of a, of a black woman to, to work and to eat the bread that she has earned with the sweat of her own hands, she is absolutely my equal and every man's equal in a certain sense." Do you think that there's a parallel between that way of thinking of equality with this particular case? I mean, I mean, here, I mean, in this case, they're talking about the right of transportation.
Right.
Right? So, so the court is saying, and, and the court agrees that the, that you have a, you have an equal, everybody has an equal right to access trains. I think that's what the law in Louisiana actually did do, right? They were trying to say, everybody has equal access to transportation in form of trains here. And it's, and so the argument seems to be, as long as everybody has access, it doesn't matter whether we have one car or separate cars, right? I'm, I'm getting off topic a little bit here.
No, this is good. This is good.
Trying to bring it back to, maybe bring it back around a little bit to understanding Brown's majority opinion.
Yeah, I, I think that, yeah, you're exactly right about, about Lincoln in the debates, right? Where he says, right, speaking of the African American woman, in some respects, she is not my equal, but in the right to earn or to keep the bread that the sweat of her brow has earned. She is my equal and the equal of Judge Douglas and the equal of every other human being. What I think we ought to keep in mind is actually what, what Justice Harland in his dissent hearkens us back to is the Dred Scott case, right? Because the, the Lincoln-Douglas debates, right, they take place in 1858. Dred Scott had just been decided the previous year, so they are living under this, this cloud of the Dred Scott case, which has just declared, "American blacks are not citizens of the United States and never can be citizens of the United States." That has been the ruling of the Supreme Court. And Harland says, right, this rendering in, in, in Plessy v. Ferguson, he believes, and I think he was correct, that it will become as pernicious a decision and have the, the same reputation as Dred Scott, given enough time. I think that's exactly what happened. But Lincoln is, right, he is trying to convince the American people, not that, right, the, that, that American blacks are citizens of the United States necessarily, because the Supreme Court has just tossed that idea out the window and said, no, they are not and never can be. Lincoln is forced to try to convince his audience that you're dealing with human beings. He's trying to, right, convince them that these are human beings you're dealing with. Because many, especially in the South, say, right, not only that they're not citizens, but they're not even human beings. They're like cattle. They're like a dog. And you can rule, right, this creature like as you would rule a dog. Lincoln is trying to combat that opinion, which is slowly, not just eroding the, the understanding of the, the Declaration of Independence, but penetrating into the public mind. And so before he can even talk about the privileges or immunities of citizenship and transportation surely is among that category of the privileges of, of citizenship, before he can even talk about that, he has to convince the country that you're dealing with human beings here. The Civil War, the Thirteenth, the Fourteenth, the Fifteenth Amendments, they solidify in law, in constitutional law, that over, right, throwing out slavery, overturning Dred Scott, they are, that not only are they just, right, they are human beings, slavery is outlawed, but at the same time granting full citizenship rights under the, the Fourteenth and Fifteenth Amendments. So now that is what Plessy v. Ferguson is operating under. And I see in a way, right, Harland trying to make the same argument as Lincoln, to the extent that right now Harland, right now, he has to take up where Lincoln left off. Right? Yeah, these are citizens and the law requires it. And therefore, they are, are equals in that regard. And equal access to transportation is simply not enough. Because it violates, it violates their, their privileges of citizenship, including transportation. And so Harland goes back to this, right, this colorblind constitution, which, right, Lincoln, regardless of whether or not, right, he believed that or not, was not able to do simply given the times. And what he had to, right, that's sort of the situation he was forced to deal with in regards to what the public mindset at that time was. So.
That's really well put. I mean, that's, that's really, I, that, I mean, that sheds new light in my mind on the, just in terms of how to think about the significance of Harland's claims. I mean, he's trying to argue, I think, then, that Lincoln had, I love the way you characterize Lincoln. Lincoln's trying to prove, first of all, that, that African Americans and slaves have to be treated as equal human beings. And he has to make that argument, as you put it, I'm just saying this again for my own sake, because this is really an interesting argument you may, you've made. He has to make that argument in order to turn the American mind away from Taney's argument in Dred Scott and toward the idea that, that regardless of color, slaves, former slaves, African Americans can in fact be citizens. Then Harland seems to be coming along and saying, well, we've asserted that they can be citizens, right? Through, through the, through the Thirteenth and Fourteenth Amendment. But, but being a citizen means you must in fact be equal. So citizenship alone is not enough. It must be equal citizenship. Is that, is that?
Yeah, that's exactly right.
That's really, that's really interesting. Yeah, that puts it in some great, great context. Go ahead, please. Did somebody, Emily, did you want to jump in?
Oh, no, the only thing that I would maybe just, oh, do you want to?
No, please, go for it.
The only, the only thing I would add to that is, I, I think Jason does a great job of including Lincoln in with this Dred Scott question. Because ultimately, you know, I, I think what's, what's so interesting about Dred Scott's decision among abolitionists is Garrison says, "Look at these awful founding fathers," right? They say one thing and they do another, right? That this constitution, this bloody, heaven-dary document, right? He calls, he calls the founding fathers essentially hypocrites. And what Taney's doing is, Taney's like, they're not hypocrites, they're racist like me. Right? Like, like African Americans, they're like, no, I mean, he doesn't say that, right? But he says that. And so African Americans were never included, never a part of this document. As, as Jason says with Lincoln, you know, of, of course they were, because they're human beings and they have the same natural rights as we do. They may not be equal in all things. And Douglas agrees with them, right? In the sense that, of course we're not. We've been enslaved for the past 200 years. How can we prove our equality to you? But then, you know, the Reconstruction Amendments reintroduce them. But then I think the question is, again, that level of citizenship, right? Are there levels then within citizenship, once you do have these basic rights? And it's renegotiating the place all over again. And Harland's saying, the Constitution is colorblind, right? So Taney's saying, they were never a part of it in the beginning, right? And Harland's like, of course they were, because there's no distinction on anything. And now it's, where do they fall? And what is the political right versus the social right versus the civil right versus all the rights, right? Yeah.
I see a, I see another good question from, from Megan. Oh, actually, it just, it just disappeared. Let me scroll up here just a bit. Megan asks, "Can you talk about the doll test used in the Brown case and the results of the study?" So this is the famous footnote number 11 in Brown that, that Warren cites in his opinion. Because interestingly enough, right, I think I, I mentioned this before, but Warren does not go back to the colorblind constitution of Justice Harland. He does not make that argument in Brown, although you would, you, you would suspect him to sort of, you know, vindicate Harland here in 1954, to vindicate this idea of the colorblind constitution. But surprisingly enough, Warren doesn't make that argument. He doesn't make that constitutional argument. Instead, he makes a scientific argument. He makes a psychological argument. Because he says explicitly in his opinion, "We don't know what the Fourteenth Amendment means or meant to its, to its framers." Right? Because the Fourteenth Amendment, correct me if I'm wrong here, but it's, it's ratified in 1868. And the debates, the debates on the amendment take place in 1866. Warren says explicitly, quote, "We cannot turn the clock back to 1868 when the amendment was adopted, when the amendment was adopted." And he says that, you go back and you look at these, these debates between the proponents and the opponents of, of the, the post-war amendments. Brown says, right, people disagreed on this. The proponents said one thing. They wanted to remove all legal distinctions. And the opponents, right, certainly did not want to go that far. And then there were others who sort of occupied this middling ground between the two extremes. And Warren ends up sort of throwing up his hands, throwing his hands up in the air and saying, right, we, we can't turn the clock back to history. We can't figure out what this amendment actually meant to its framers. Although I think it's interesting that he thinks it's even worthy to consider what would be the, the arguments of the opponents were against the amendment.
But Jason, do you really think he means that? I mean, look, I've heard, I mean, that, I, that's an argument. We can't really understand what the framers of something meant. That's an argument that I hear repeated by, by those who simply adopt the notion of, say, a living constitution. That is, what is the law, what should the law, in this case, the Constitution mean, or in this case, the Fourteenth Amendment mean? Well, it means, it, it's, it's much less important what it meant originally. It's more important that we interpret it in a way that meets what we today understand to be the necessities of our actual, for political and social conditions.
Right, right. Because Warren takes exactly that line of thought. He's, he does not go back to the Constitution in his opinion. In Brown, he does not really make a constitutional argument. He makes a scientific or a psychological argument by, right, citing this, you know, famous footnote number 11 involving the doll, the doll test of Kenneth Clark. And I'll just speak briefly about that since Megan asked about this doll test. You know, you know, basically, white and black children were given white and black dolls to play with. And they were asked questions like, which dolls do you think are better? Which ones, you know, are the dolls that you prefer? Which one dolls do you like? And the white and black children all said essentially that the, the white dolls were the better ones. And this justifies in the eyes of the court, going back to that, that sense or that feeling of inferiority, that it's real. And science can actually prove that and uphold that. Strangely enough, right, the facts haven't changed from Plessy until Brown. Brown had said in Plessy v. Ferguson that the feelings of inferiority, that those badges of inferiority were simply contrary to the facts. It wasn't a real sense of inferiority. But skip forward to 1954 here, and Warren is essentially saying, no, we've made these advances. We've made these improvements scientifically, psychologically. We have now justified those feelings of inferiority, even though the facts haven't changed at all. And therefore, the facts on the ground, those aren't the things that matter. It's this, the badge of inferiority that Black Americans are, are stamped with because of, of segregation. And that's why we have to overturn, that's why we have to overturn the law in this case. Because, you know, not, not necessarily on the grounds that it violates, right, the original intent or meaning of the Fourteenth Amendment, but because we now know that these feelings of inferiority are now in fact real. And we slide with those feelings against the facts.
I see. Yeah, because we can prove it through scientific observation, psychological observation. Okay.
Yeah, I, I think the other thing that's important to mention in, in Brown's decision in Plessy, that's always a confusing thing, right? In, in Brown's decision in Plessy, he talks about how legislation cannot create inferiority. Right? That Supreme Court rulings cannot create inferiority. And Harland- And Harland, uh, certainly dismisses that and says, well, it may not create it, but it, it certainly doesn't do anything to negate it, right? Um, I, I think the one thing that does change is the now requirement of public education. And the fact that the state, uh, yeah, that, that's, that's mentioned early on in the decision of Warren. That it is now a requirement of the state. It is, uh, considered to be the foundation of development of good American citizens. And this is something that the state provides, and when the state provides it. And, uh, bringing in the social sciences, how it creates this badge of inferiority. I, I would say that's the only new development, um, is, is now the necessity and requirement of public education. And the state providing said thing.
Hey, Emily, can you say a little bit more about that? Sheldon wanted to know, uh, when was, how, you know? What was the time period when education became, became a focal point as a, uh, as a right? And then, and then a kind of, uh, by law requirement? Um, is it just prior to this? Do you know?
If, if I remember correctly, it's, it's a part of the New Deal.
Oh, that's right.
Right? And, um, and especially with issues of employment, right? If you make the kids go to school, then it, it definitely then offers that more, uh, jobs for, uh, the working, the working man. So this is, uh, before World War Two, but still incredibly recent, right? And so the question of, A, what should this look like? How, how do you provide it on an equal basis? But, you know, I mean, obviously, education is not going to take hold immediately after the Civil War. When you approach ex-southern plantation holders and saying, hey, what we're gonna do is tax you. So the guy down the streets kid can go to school and then be competitor to you and a more savvy and educated competitor, right? That doesn't exactly, you know, thrill the South by any means. Yeah.
Yeah, but that's a great point, because they did, I'm sorry, they did, I just, it reminds me, though, there was a massive expansion of, of school facilities, right? That came about during the New Deal, as a result of the public projects and things like that. Good point.
And, and you certainly see that, um, what, one thing that always really fascinates me. That during the process of Brown v Board, you see more southern philanthropists come out of the woodwork. And send thousands of dollars to the NAACP and all of these other organizations saying. You want a school made of granite and marble and gold, right? Here, have it, right? That we will create, we will create unequal facilities and you will have greater facilities than the white man, right? We, we simply don't want integration. So at this point, it has absolutely nothing to do with the equality at the facility, right?
Interesting.
So.
Great point. Jason, I'm sorry, I cut you off.
No, I was just, I was actually gonna ask, uh, Dr. Hess a question, because I know that, um, right after Brown has decided. There's a whole new host of, uh, of cases involving segregation in other realms besides education.
Right.
Uh, and the court ends up striking these, right, separate but equal facilities down upon the basis of the, uh, the Brown case. So I know there's one that comes out of South Carolina regarding, uh, right, separate but equal, uh, access to golf court, golf courts. Um, and so the court strikes it down and says, right, see Brown v Board. Um, so I don't know, if you could talk about sort of the, 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 the impact of, of Brown in that regard?
Uh, yeah, the interesting thing about Brown v Board is that it was so significant in certain ways and not at all in others. Uh, you have, well, like you said, the, the integration of, of golf courses. Or after the Montgomery Bus Boycott, the same day that the state attempted to make carpooling illegal. Is the day that the Supreme Court had decided in Gale v Browder that you cannot segregate, right, in public transportation. And, and you, you do see this wave of sit-ins, uh, you know, at, at lunch counters and wait-ins and read-ins. And work-ins and all of these different protests, uh, up until the Civil Rights Act of sixty-four. Which is the blanket statement that this is no longer tolerable and permissible in the United States. So it, it provides the impetus for more protests of that sort. That aren't as significant, I would argue, as public education, right, provided by the state. But certainly, that badge of inferiority idea, right, carries the weight. Unlike, uh, this is an important service provided by the state for, to make fertile soil for our citizens. But yet, on the flip side, in nineteen fifty-five, uh, the same court has to issue Brown two of, well, when are you gonna do this, right? You say it, uh, and here it is, and it's out there, but. When is this actually going to be implemented? And so in Brown two, uh, this is with all deliberate speed, right? Which for young African-American families, that's, well, with all deliberate speed. And for the spirit of the South, that's the second Tuesday of next week. And so what, what happens is, I, I think what's, what's absolutely necessary for the civil rights movement to be successful. Is you have the black ink on white paper, right? The rulings, the legislation. And then you have the courageous foot soldiers who, Little Rock Nine, for example, who have to test it out, right? And see if it holds any weight and, and see if, you know, troops are going to enforce this. Or if anybody's going to come to them and make sure that this isn't just a piece of paper, right? What, I mean, what does James Madison say about the Bill of Rights, the parchment barrier, right? That ultimately, you know, you try and integrate a school, uh, Ole Miss, for example, and what is James Meredith gonna do? Say like, well, look, I've got it. I've got it, you political terrorists. You gotta stop now. Like, it's paper, right? But.
Has made his decision, now let him enforce it.
Yeah, I mean, does the paper mean anything?
By the way, I'd like to come back to that at some point and ask about the effect that this has had. That the, the, the way Warren, not just the decision, but the way Warren made it and justified it. What has the effect been on our view of the courts in the last half, since the last half of the twentieth century? In terms of issuing orders and, and how enforcement follows. I'd like to come back to that at some point. It's a really fascinating question. I, but I, but I, I kinda wanna go back a little bit to, to, to Warren's argument as well. Uh, to, where, where Jason was talking earlier specifically about how he, he. Um, and by the way, let me just mention, I think Jason's answered two questions that we got, one from Larry and Stacy, having to do with. Uh, the relationship between, um, Brown and Plessy. And also why, uh, Warren didn't rely on the fourteenth amendment. I thought Jason answered that really well. But, but look, here, let me ask this question. Why could, could Warren, it seems to me anyway, Warren could have taken Harland's dissent. In, in, in nineteen fifty-four and almost word for word, have borrowed it and plopped it into the majority opinion. And, a- a- and it would have justified, in a way, desegregation of schools. Based on a constitutional argument rooted in a, in a certain reading of the fourteenth amendment. And I, I'm always just struck at the fact that Harland, or I'm sorry, that Warren doesn't do that. Why? I mean, is there something else going on here?
It's very, it's very striking, right? Um, right, the, uh, Warren has the opportunity to sort of, or, you know, ha- you know. Half a century later to vindicate, uh, to vindicate Harland's dissent, right? To vindicate this lone voice calling out into the wilderness in eighteen ninety-six. Uh, that the constitution and laws of the United States ought to be colorblind, that we have a colorblind constitution. But Warren intentionally, deliberately seems to sort of dance around that point. So as not to make that argument, because he does not make the argument that Harland does. That our constitution and laws ought to be colorblind. Uh, Warren does not go back to the original meaning of the fourteenth amendment. Uh, instead, he relies upon these, right, these psychological studies, these social science tests. And I think, and I'm just sort of speculating here, but I think that failing to make that argument. Um, from Harland's dissent in Plessy, the constitution, our constitution is colorblind. Failing to make that argument, um, in the, uh, in the Brown v Board case. The result is that that leaves the door open for, um, right, later. Uh, laws, later policies based upon the conditions of race. What I have in mind here, for example, this leaves the door open for the way the court will rule later on. In regards to, for example, say affirmative action policies. If Warren had adopted Harland's view that our constitution is colorblind. That would have slammed the door on any sort of, uh, racial discrimination or racial preference in the law. The fact that he ignores Harland is what makes your, your affirmative action cases possible in the first place.
That, that's a great point. That's a very important point. Uh, hadn't thought of that.
So I, you know, I think, I think that Brown is absolutely correctly decided on the grounds of the fourteenth and thirteenth amendments. Um, but the reasoning that goes into Warren's, um, opinion. Uh, is not a constitutional argument. Um, the reasoning behind Brown, relying upon these psychological studies and not endorsing Harland's view. That our constitution is colorblind. I think in that regard, even though the, the rea- the, uh, the judgment, the final judgment of the, uh, the court in, uh, in Brown is absolutely correct. The reasoning behind it, because he doesn't rely on the constitution, because he doesn't make a constitutional argument. I think there are, there are some flaws in, in Warren's reasoning, but not his judgment.
Yeah, that's very interesting, because again, his, 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 to the extent that there's a constitutional argument, it seems to be this. Segregated schools are unconstitutional because they violate the fourteenth amendment. Because of the psychological effect that segregated schools have on minority children. Am I, am I oversimplifying it?
No, that's, I think that, that's, I think that's, that's correct.
Wow, that's, that's amazing. Yeah, okay, so, I mean, you've kind of brought us around, Jason, to, to, to my last question. Not my final question of the seminar, but the question I had, had mentioned prior to that. And that is, how, how does this, does this open, do you think this, uh, case? Uh, can people point to this case as, as, as a real turning point in the ability of the courts? To, um, to interpret const- the constitution in such a broad way? Almost really without having, without having any obligation to turn to the language of the constitution itself to.
Yeah.
To make decisions.
I think, I could be wrong about this, but I think the Brown case is the first time the Supreme Court, uh, renders a ruling. Um, that doesn't go back to the constitution. And they sort of ignore the constitution. And, yeah, and what was that?
I know, I was just gonna reinforce what you had said before. It's also the first time that they use social science as evidence, so.
That's right.
Moving away, so I, I don't, I am no constitutional scholar by any means, um, but I, I do know that. And it would make sense then that we shift from constitution to social science.
Yeah, what's also interesting, what's also interesting is, right, you talked about the impact, Dr. Hess, of, of the Brown case and how it's applied. Right, to other areas of society, golf courses, railways, uh, this sort of thing. Um, but in those decisions, the Supreme Court merely says, right, essentially, right, this law is overturned, see Brown v Board. But no psychological or social science studies had been done on the effect of segregation on golf players.
Right.
Um, as, right, the psychological studies have been done on the results of, um, of young schoolchildren in segregated schools. They just say unconstitutional, see Brown v Board.
At the same time, what's more important than educating the youth of our country, right? Like, I mean.
Are you running for president? It sounds like you're running for president.
And do you want me to? Do you wanna be my running mate?
I vote for you.
I think it's too soon. It's too soon after the election to even be talking. But now, now, related to this, this is, you guys, this is really thoughtful, um, the things that you're bringing up. But related to this then, what about, what does this case, what effect does this case have on, let's say, the relationship of the courts to the other branches? And Congress, because it seems to me that this may not be the first case, uh, but it seems to me that the rulings. And Emily, you were talking about this earlier, right? They make a decision, but they also, they also issue, um. Uh, orders, right, that this be implemented.
Right.
Uh, without really getting into the details of how it's gonna be implemented. But this, this, this seems to me to be an example of the courts. Almost getting into the business of the legis- uh, uh, kind of exercising what you might call quasi-legislative and quasi-executive powers in a way. So I wonder if the, i- i- in that sense, if, uh, again, I, I know it's too simple to point to a single case to say, this is what, what, what led to the. Sort of ascendancy of the, of the Supreme Court, as some people understand it in our constitutional system. But I, but I have to also wonder out, uh, about. Um, look, there's this, there seems to be this persistent view. That the Supreme Court is the fa- has the final say on everything touching on the constitution. And that if we can just get the Supreme Court to rule on something, as long as we agree with their decision, everything will be great. Because they can, they can make a ruling, they can change things. The Supreme Court is really the sort of impetus for social, uh, change in this country. And I, and I just wondered if, if the, if the decision of the court in this case. Maybe didn't single-handedly, so, you know, contribute to that view of the court, but that it certainly elevated it. And, and maybe cemented it in the public mind in the last half of the twentieth century. No, Emily, you do.
Uh, I know, I'm, I'm having difficulty, because I'm, I'm thinking about, and maybe this is only because I just got done teaching Dred Scott in one of my undergrad classes. But, you know, I think Lincoln would certainly say that this isn't a twentieth century thing, you know, if Lincoln were in this webinar. That, you know, I, I think Tony, you know, introduces the question of the Missouri Compromise, right? In the ruling of Dred Scott, just so he can use his position, right, and what Lincoln might call the slave power. Uh, to rule on, uh, the constitutionality of, of Congress and legislating slavery in the territories. So, uh, what's interesting, what seems to be a theme is that, uh, both the rollback of African-American rights. And the progress of African-Americans, uh, seems to yield some rather contentious decisions in the Supreme Court. As to what their jurisdiction really is and how much power they actually have. Uh, but I, again, I'm no constitutional scholar, so I'll, I'll leave this to Stevens as to how significant this case was in that regard.
And don't feel like you have to address that, Jason, but.
Yeah, I don't know if I can, if I can add anything, anything more, more to what, uh, to what Dr. Hess already said. Uh, because certainly, right, this is not the first, uh, Supreme Court decision to be, uh, to be controversial. Um, and, uh, right, if you read Lincoln's, uh, reply to, to Dred Scott. Um, you see Lincoln arguing that, right, we disagree with Dred Scott, we're going to fight against this ruling. Even though nobody, uh, opposes it. Um, that is to say, right, no one has set Dred Scott free, but we're going to work to overturn it. Um, that is, uh, in a way, sort of the, the, uh, the response you see, um, from the South. Following, uh, Brown v Board, right? We are against this, and now we are more united than ever to try to, to, uh, right, to stop any fur- further progress. In regards to, uh, the rights of, uh, of African-Americans. It emboldens them while at the same time, uh, aboldening, emboldening the other side. Um, as, right, Dr. Hess already talked about in regards to, uh, the NAACP and other groups, uh, fighting on behalf of the minority rights. So it ends up firing up everybody as controversial decisions and controversial elections tend to do.
Very good, very well put. We have about five minutes left, and so what I thought I would do is maybe turn us to, yeah, the time just flies when you have great conversations like this. So what I thought maybe we'd do is turn back to a question that was submitted at the very beginning. And the question was, um, when would, when would you say that segregation was fully ended in public education? Now, I wanna ask that question, I wanna approach that question from a slightly different perspective by asking, what was the, what was the immediate effect? Let's start there, of the Brown, uh, v Board of Education decision? The immediate effect, even, even in, 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 um, in Kansas? Um, and then how, you know, beyond Kansas, nationally, what was the immediate or sort of short-term effect of this decision? And then maybe get your views on the longer-term effects in terms of, um, of desegregation.
Right.
And movement towards, uh, greater equal rights. Anybody can start.
Okay, uh, well, I had read, I, I believe it was in, uh, Robert Nurelles, The House I Live In. That he had cited that there were only ten school districts that had fully desegregated by nineteen sixty. Okay, so thi- this is by no means overnight this, uh, integration revolution of the South by any means. As I mentioned earlier, you know, you need individuals that are willing, uh, to, you know, risk, uh, quite a bit. And, and be rather courageous to help integrate schools in nineteen fifty-seven, you have Little Rock, right? And this is something that both, uh, a good portion of African-Americans and whites wanted in that, uh, town. And even then, so much resistance. And once, uh, Orville Faubus, right, uses the, uh, National Guard, right? To make sure that the students don't come in, and Eisenhower finds out and he is hot, right? And the paratroopers come in from the Hundred and First Airborne. It's the first time since federal troops are in the South. To reinforce African-American rights, civil rights since Reconstruction. You know what Faubus says after that? He shuts down the schools. He just shut them down for a year, right? Like, so, I, this is not, this does not have, I would argue, any real significant effect, uh, immediately. What a downer. Jason, can you bring us up? Can you, can you say something? What a downer. Jason, can you bring us up? Can you, can you say something a little bit lighter?
No, well, what I was thinking was, was another downer. I mean, I was gonna go back to our, our previous point regarding, um, right, Brown sort of starts the ball rolling in regards to the court, uh, turning more to, uh, to social science and psychological studies instead of what the constitutional text actually says and what the constitutional text actually means. Because, um, right, part of the, the legacy is Brown, from Brown is, uh, the, uh, contained in the expression from, from Warren that, right, we cannot turn the clock back to 1868 when the amendment was adopted. We can't turn the clock back. In other words, we cannot think the thoughts of our ancestors. We cannot think the thoughts of the founders. We cannot think the thoughts of Abraham Lincoln. Uh, it is, right, next to impossible, if not impossible, to do that. So we need to rely on other sources for our rulings. Um, right, this will be the same mindset of, uh, you know, for example, uh, Justice William Brennan. Um, one of the, uh, the most famous, uh, late, uh, uh, 20th century, uh, Supreme Court jurists. This will, uh, uh, fundamentally change in some ways, uh, how the court approaches the, the constitutional text. That in, in part is, is part of the, uh, the legacy. And sorry, I think I just brought us down even further.
Well, I, I, that, that, that's an interesting way, obviously being, um, a historian and, and more of a, a social historian initially, that, uh, thinking of the repercussions of it on that level. Because ultimately, if you are focusing on social science and studies, there are new studies, right, every day. And depending on which ones you want to focus on, right, there's real, really no
Just about anything.
Authoritative texts like the constitution to hold one, one another accountable and not just position, to, to use your position as, uh, one of activism as opposed to duty for country. Yeah.
By the way, I just mentioned on that point, I'm always suspicious of social science and social scientists. Because there's an irony here in that the, the, the social science in, in the United States really, really took, or really started to grow out of an attempt to prove that Africans were inferior to whites. Uh, I mean, social science really had its foundations in
Going back to George Fitchew, for example.
George Fitchew and others.
Yeah, there's this, wasn't the, the Southern, uh, physicians came, found this, this horrible disease that spread throughout African and African-Americans in the South that, that caused them to run away.
Yeah, it's amazing. They're still, they're still trying to determine the, the gene or the virus that causes this. But anyway. But look, we have come to the end of our time. But before we go, can I ask you, do, do either of you have recommendations for books that people can read on this? Uh, Emily, you mentioned Robert Nurelles book.
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, Robert Nurelles, The House I Live In, is a very good survey of race in, uh, the American century, in the 20th century. There's also these, uh, pretty good, um, Bedford St. Martin's readers. And this one's Brown v. Board of Education. It's a compilation of primary source documents that all kind of lead up to the Brown decision, newspaper articles of, of what the responses are after Brown is passed. Some good discussion questions in the back, if it's something that you ever wanna incorporate in your classroom. But looking at the Bedford series, um, and of course, you know, always, always be a little cautious because editors have their biases as we all do. But, um, yeah, I would recommend those two, definitely.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, besides the constitution and the actual opinions of the courts, of course, that should be the first thing we go to. Uh, Ed Ehrler has done, I think, some good work on, on Brown v. Board, Ed Ehrler from the, uh, the Claremont Institute. So that would be one source you might look into.
Very good, good suggestions. Thank you very much, both of you. Very thoughtful conversations. I've learned a lot as a result of this. And I, again, thank you very much for your, for your, your time this morning.